As is the chair's custom, I'm going to ask you to rise for a moment of silent reflection. Think about the things we're grateful for and our neighbors in Florida who are struggling with things we don't have to struggle with this morning. Please join me in a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Members, you saw the publicly posted agenda and you have it in your packets. Are there any changes to the agenda, additions, deletions? Seeing none, we'll let the agenda stand as published. In your packet also were the minutes from September 20th meeting. Colleagues, what's your pleasure? Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Second.
We'll give that to Commissioner Beer because Commissioner Breck is going to have something to say in a minute, I'm sure. Further discussion to the minutes from September 20th? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion prevails, the minutes are adopted. This brings us to the point on the agenda where we recognize interested citizens who want to speak about an issue that's not on the agenda for consideration today. We ask that you approach the podium, identify yourself for the record and for the people who are watching at home, and limit your comments to five minutes or less. Is there anyone who wants to speak to something that's not on the agenda today? And I might point out that if you're here to speak about Renaissance Festival, we're going to have a workshop in about an hour next door. You're certainly welcome to observe that workshop and to take that in. And I have a hunch there's going to be another public hearing coming up here in a couple of weeks concerning the issues surrounding the Renaissance Festival and their conditional use permit. So just bear that in mind before your comments. Is there anyone online that has some comments to make, anyone online? Seeing no one approaching the microphone, we'll move to point number five on the agenda. Just a minute. Mr. Beer. Okay, so there was nobody was going to move quickly. Nobody wanted to be first. That was the issue.
Can you guys hear us out there? Okay.
John Weckman with Louisville Township.
Supervisor, welcome to the board.
This past weekend was disastrous for traffic with the Ren Fest. Truthfully, the last five Saturdays, the people in our area could not get out. The businesses couldn't get any people in, and it's just getting worse every year. And like I say, I think they don't have the parking, they don't know how to park cars, and they don't listen to comments out in proof. So that's my main concern. I can't make the meeting an hour from now, but I just want to express, I got so many calls over the weekend, it's just getting unreal. And I'm really tired of it, so.
Thank you for your comments Supervisor Breckner. Weckman, thank you, sorry. Commissioner Breck, you're confusing the issue. Please, if you'd just identify yourself for the record, that'd be great. Make your comments.
My name is Don Ranier. I live right across the road on 14 from Seaver's Corn maze there, and Ren Fest traffic has been affecting me for more than just this year. We can't get back to our home. We can get out, and that's the story all the way up and down the bluff. What is our time worth on a weekend? I have a value on my time, so I would hope that you would consider that. But the other thing that goes on in the past between Bo, Bo Beller and Jim, the owner of the Ren Fest, they would say, oh, that didn't happen. It's not as bad as you think it is. Well, yeah, it is. So I kind of, I was meeting with Bo last year to work with him to fix it. What John said is true. You'll come up with a solution. You should do this, 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 and this to fix the problem. They don't, they won't. I don't know if it's a desire to reach in the pocket or the lack thereof, or if it's possibly mismanagement or a combination thereof. They seemingly are unable to fix the problem earlier. Now that thing has grown so big, so fast, there are people walking by our place regularly with costumes on because they can walk faster than the other two people still sitting in the car. So they get out and walk to the Ren Fest over a mile because they don't want to sit in traffic. That's how slow it's going. But my point was going to be about that. The people are dressed up. This thing is popular. It's the new Halloween. It's going to continue to get bigger and bigger. There was a point in time where possibly they could have handled the parking. That time is gone. They can't handle the volumes that are going there for whatever reasons. There's a variety of reasons. So something needs to change or gone, find a new home. That would be my preference. They can't and won't manage it. So, and I, this year I did document the cars per minute in the event that you guys choose to let them stay. It is documented. My son was with me, my grandson was with me. We went down there all but one weekend and documented the cars per minute flowing into there. And the greatest speed that we saw was 21 cars per minute flowing on the Bryant entrance there, double lane. The slowest we saw was eight, but it probably averaged somewhere around 17. And I have the notes. I took notes every weekend. Two weeks ago, to verify what they did, I went up and took pictures. I have a little airplane, went up and took pictures of all the traffic intersections and their parking lots. And it was, I think, 1:30 in the afternoon. It was disaster. You could see there wasn't any parking personnel left. Cars were backed up for miles and miles and very little parking activity was going on. It's reached monumental problem. Anyway, you guys know that.
We do.
I've talked to a number of you on the phone, if you recognize me. So anyway, thank you for taking our calls. Appreciate that. Anything you can do for the way the people would be appreciated. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, and both those comments and many more will be taken into account in the workshop we're about to have here and within the hour. Yeah, we're painfully aware of what's happening there. We're trying to balance the importance of helping the business thrive sometimes when they're not helping themselves thrive. The, as important, maybe more so, are the private citizens who have to put up with this. And of course, our effort is to kind of find that balance in there to make that work. So thank you for your comments. Anyone else that wants to comment, excuse me, on this issue or any other issue that is not on the agenda this morning? Okay, going once, twice? Don't be shy. Moving to number five, new employee introductions. Commissioner Wolf, the vice chair, and I were privileged to meet with a couple of our new employees. You know, we have so many people who look like me who are retiring. It's just a wave of us, and I'm not looking at any of you in particular in the audience who work for us, Leslie, but... But we're welcoming new employees who are coming along to pick up the slack and keep up the excellent service we're used to. So Piper and Russell, if you'd approach the microphone, just give us a brief bio of what department you're in, how long you've been here, maybe where you came from, and whatever else you'd like that doesn't plow too deep and doesn't take more than two minutes.
Absolutely. Hi, everybody, I'm Piper. I was born and raised in Mankato, but recently I've been in New Prague, Elko New Market area for the last five years. I have been with Scott County for the last three months. I work at our mental health center with our connect program, and I am in Shakopee High School five days a week, and I really enjoy it. So thank you all for having me.
Thank you, Piper, and welcome aboard.
That's a great area you live in.
Good morning, my name is Russell Reiniger. I started in the building inspections department. I was raised half in Nebraska and half in Maple Plain, Minnesota, and I formerly worked for the city of Maplewood. I've got a wife and an eight-year-old son, and I'm looking forward to working for Scott County.
Good deal. It's a good department with a good reputation, Russell. We're glad you're there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the new folks. At this point, we're going to take up the consent agenda. These are items that are either rather routine in nature or have been vetted through a workshop, something like that, that have consensus among the board, and we adopt them usually with one motion. It's a rather brief list today. It's only seven items. Excuse me. Item 6.1 will be adopt resolution 2022-167. Are we good? Okay. Approving amendment number one to the Minnesota Department of Human Services grant for an adult mental health initiative and community support program. 6.2, adopt resolution 2022-210, accepting grant funding and authorizing execution of a grant agreement with the Metfalken Council. This will be for partial reimbursement for prior acquisitions at the Doyle Kenefick Regional Park. 6.3, adopt resolution 2022-230, approving a preliminary plat and final plat of Tice Acres consisting of one lot and one outlot on 88.75 acres. Michael Tice applicant, John R. Tice and Dolores V. Tice, property owners. This also includes a conservation easement in section 35 of Louisville Township. 6.4, adopt resolution 2022-231, approving a conditional use permit amendment for an essential service, this would be a substation, locate a permanent outdoor staging area. Northern State's Power Company applicant, Northern State's Power Company doing business as Excel Energy, that's the property owner. This is in section 15 of Jackson Township. 6.5, adopt resolution 2022-232, authorizing a budget amendment and a second contract increase for the county road Highway 83 project. 6.6, adopt resolution 2022-234, approving one full-time equivalent systems management specialist building inspections. Wonder if this has something to do with Russell. 6.7, approve payroll processing and personnel actions to my colleagues. That is the consent agenda for this morning. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to the second.
Motion in the second to approve the consent agenda as published. Further discussion, hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion prevails, the consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to number seven already, committee reports and commissioner updates. Commissioner Breck, would you like to kick us off here?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since the last board meeting, here are my activities. Wednesday, September 21st, had Scott County Extension Committee meeting. Commissioner Beer and I attended that. The meeting was held in Carver County. It was our joint meeting with Carver County, recognizing, and we recognized Carver County's Farm Family of the Year, which was a sovereign winery, which was interesting and fun to learn some more about that. Also that evening, I attended the Scott County Township Association Fall Meeting. Thursday, September 22nd, we had the County Court Policy Committee meeting. Discussed quite a bit there about the new positions, the PSI writers, the history writer, how that's really helped alleviate the court backlog. They're doing much better and really, really good shape. And then also talked a bit about the county's contract attorneys. So good, effective meeting. Thursday evening, September 22nd, attended Jordan Commercial Club meeting. On Tuesday, September 27th, I attended the open house for the Jordan Interchange Project. It was held at the Jordan Library, good turnout. I know they also were collecting public comment online, really getting comment on the four preliminary design options out there. So good conversation among the folks who have interest in that. Wednesday, September 28th, Leslie and I had the quarterly meeting with the mayor and city administrator of New Prague. They had a real successful Dozenki Day celebration. Things really are going well in New Prague, but we did brainstorm, identify a couple of county topics to get to their city council in the next few months. I think library and then also Michael Thompson with the assessor's office. On September 28th, had the cap agency finance committee meeting. And then on Thursday, September 29th, and Friday, September 30th, I attended the Minnesota Association of Community Corrections Act county's conference along with Molly Bruner and three of our other staff. Really, the talk of the commissioners who were there was the strategy for the legislative session, getting the formula ready and hopefully getting that change that really will impact all of us and all of our levies. And I think that's the end of my report, Mr. Chair. Oh, I maybe talked to a few folks over the last couple of weeks about Renaissance. You, yeah.
Yes, I'll bet you have. Thank you, Commissioner Breck. Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think a few of us talked about the Renaissance with some folks here. So anyhow, and thank you for those calls. We need to hear that. So on the 20th, I met with the administrator. Also that afternoon, I met with Credit River and their administrator, mayor, and our administrator, Leslie Vermillion. Very nice meeting. We're working on that 27, and it's county 27. And by next meeting, it should be done. It's really looking nice out there. If anyone has a chance to look at that, it's coming along real good. So then we had the township meeting on the 21st. As Commissioner Breck had mentioned, I also see Commissioner Beer there also. I think we were going to get a 10-minute slot, and I think we ended up up there about almost a half an hour up in the front of the room. So very nice. When they ask us lots of questions, I think that's a good thing. So on the 22nd, the judicial committee. After that, Vermillion River Joint Powers meeting. Elko New Market met that evening, all quiet out there. On the 26th, the watershed management, WMO met. The 27th, as Barb had mentioned, the 169, 282 open house. And yeah, a lot of good comments. People just really can't wait for that to get done and get changed and be safer. So that'll be very nice. And that's a few years away yet, but you can see the light. Then last night, Prior Lake had a little open house instead of a workshop to meet the new police chief. Liam is the first name. I can't remember the last name. Can you, Dave?
Chief Liam.
Chief Liam, that's it. Yep, Steve, Chief Steve is leaving, retiring. And so, and they promoted him with him, and he's a real nice guy. So I think things will be good over there. And then Credit River met. They have, I think the biggest thing was in a planning and zoning meeting early on, they had a little lot that they're going to try to shoehorn a house into, and I don't know. I don't ever like those that much, but the landowners want to put a house there. So Cedar Lake was after that, pretty quiet out there. And this morning, a couple folks came in for the new employee welcome. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Beer, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much on the 21st. As was mentioned, the joint Scott Carver Extension Committee. It's always good to see our Carver compatriots out there remembering more part of something bigger when it comes to extension. So it's always good to do that once a year. It was a great sight. 21st later that evening, went to race. I think you won. Pretty sure you won getting to the township meeting from Waconia. But that's, come on, wait now, wait. We need verification of that, but we'll leave that for another day. I took another longer route, more scenic maybe, I don't know. But it was good to go to the township meeting. I mean, you know, the message I always give is, sure, we're voted on by districts, but ultimately we are all county commissioners and representing the county voting on the district. So, yeah, the more we can be there, the better, I think. The 28th, metro mosquito control drought, tough on crops, tough on yards, tough on other things, really good for keeping mosquitoes down. I don't know if we wanted to go that way, but what do you do? So winding up a successful mosquito control season. And on the 29th was my monthly administrator meeting with Leslie and got a little bit more in-depth on our brims here at Scott County. Yeah, so that concludes my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Beer. Commissioner Ulrich.
And this is important because it's almost like you're asking them what bills you're going to pay. With all your surplus, what mandates are you going to fund? You know, we need to know. It's like the public has already paid a massive amount in taxes, and they've got this big amount of money sitting there that should come back to pay the legislature's bills, basically. Fund the mandates, fund community corrections, fund our needs, and then we can reduce our levy amount. You know, we set a preliminary levy, but we can reduce that, but we need to know. So that's why I'm asking cities, counties, towns, school districts to push for this special session after the election. And apparently the speaker has told others that if the balance of power were made pretty much as it is now, the likelihood would be higher. You know, if one, if there are any other changes than other than what it is now, it probably decreases the chances. But, so that's what I'm trying to push forward. 21st, the TAB. We don't have a lot submitted for the TAB, but we have the Miriam Junction Trail, which scored out of the money, basically is the way I would say it, until they started talking about carbon money, the carbon reduction money that's coming back. And I looked at the list of what would be qualified, how you could spend that carbon money. I said, well, let's use it for parks and trails and, and I said, it's funny, you're going to think this is funny, but this is the first time in 22 years of being on the TAB that I've ever spoke on behalf of that or bike or trails. Usually I'm focused on the meat and potatoes of roads and bridges. So for them to hear me say something like that was probably shocking. They went for it, and it looks like we're headed that way, and we are in the money with the last project so far for funding. So, but you never know with the TAB. Things can change, and it's not a done deal till it's a done deal. So that's what we're dealing with. 22nd, Fish Board and Directors meeting. 23rd, STA legislative meeting. Again, that would be another place where I'm encouraging a special session. 28th, MBTA. I talked with Luther at length about the Renaissance Festival. I alerted him to the possibility that if this continues, the festival next year, that we're going to have to have a much more aggressive off-site parking and transit option that, you know, that we have significant car parking, and whether it be Eagle Creek, South Bridge, or Seagate, or Canterbury, whatever, you know, there's going to be need to, and I'm encouraging him to engage fully in the solution if there is one, you know, we don't know that. But obviously, we've all got calls, and we feel to a certain extent, the pain that people are feeling. We don't experience it personally, but it is very frustrating to us to hear how this is impacting people's lives. The third, regional solicitation funding options, that would be us working on our strategy for what we're funded at the TAB. And anyhow, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ulrich. For the chair's report, after the last meeting that evening, the 20th, the Farm Bureau held their annual meeting down at the OK Corral, which is not the OK Corral anymore, it's the Jordan Supper Club. There you go, yes. I think I was the only commissioner there, but there were a handful of legislators there. So they all got to hear about the surplus and about our community corrections budget and things like that. So they all are fully informed or over-informed about how important it is that we get a commitment on that funding sooner rather than later. Let's see. I'm sorry I missed the, I had it on my calendar, but somehow missed the township meeting on the 21st because usually somebody brings a whole bunch of really great candy bars. There were none this year? Oh, then I'm okay then. I'm sorry. So sorry. I'm being facetious to my township friends. Well, let's see. On Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we had a wedding. My youngest son got married. That was kind of fun. Monday morning, the 26th, breakfast with Senator Pratt just to talk about the lay of the land, what does it look like in St. Paul. Here are some things we need to watch out for on the county budget, you know? After all, Senator, you tell us what to do, then don't send enough money to do it. And just, you know, I could poke at my good friend that way and just help him underscore the point that we are an extension of the state government. Please send money when you come up with good ideas for us to do. At lunchtime, the Transportation Alliance Quarterly Board Meeting. I participated in that as they talked about some things in their Washington fly-in, altering the rules on the money coming from Washington and what we can spend it for, things like that. Didn't it be a moving target? On the 27th, Chair Vice Chair with Commissioner Wolf and Leslie and the host of staff, we did talk extensively about the Renaissance Festival and about the mess out there and what the board might want to do about that. Commissioner Wolf, there were two other things we touched on there. What?
McMahon Lake.
Well, the McMahon Lake lid issue that the board's been wrestling with for some time. So just know that these things do get talked about extensively before we come to the public meeting. Let's see. And then yesterday, breakfast with former Representative Tony Ulright, sort of the same thing. He still has the ear of a bipartisan he's highly regarded, to talk about whether or not there was any possibility of anything before the new session in January, amongst some other things. And then a quick meeting with the Chair of the Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District, talking about some low water issues, some water treatment issues, and again, exploring the one water plan for Scott County instead of having several boards, whether there was an appetite for that. We'll talk about that at a workshop in a future date. This morning, I did have a brief meeting with HR to talk about upcoming reviews for key employees. And then, as Commissioner Wolf mentioned, the new employees that we welcomed this morning, Russell and Piper. That's the chair's report. Questions of each other before we go to Leslie for the administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We all had a lot of fun emails this morning, or this weekend, but I did receive one last night at 10:40 from the city of Elko New Market that they have received the official applications for the Park I 35 Industrial Park for the 425,000 square foot bottling plant. So I think that is part of a direct outcome of a meeting here with the CDA, the city and the county board a couple of years ago now. Takes a little time, but that kind of push on economic development is beginning to show, I think, some positive movement. So that was a great email to see last night. One other quick update, we're into week one of voting. We've already had 3,783 early, 3,783 early ballots between the cities and the counties. And so just a reminder that Jordan and Shakopee do not have staffed drop-off boxes. We couldn't obtain enough staff to do it. So the Jordan area, please use the Public Works or the Central Shop site out at 282 and 13. And the city of Shakopee, of course, the courthouse is very close. They can always come here with it. So off to a good start. Everything is going well. That's the end of my report.
Outstanding. Thank you. So Leslie, concerning the Elko New Market development, are we allowed to talk about that now because it's been?
Yeah, it's public. They'll be announcing some public hearings coming up here, and the work now needs to move that forward.
That is good news. And you don't know how stressful it is to know that good things are coming and we're not allowed to talk about it. That's, I'm glad that pressure is off. Let's see, let's turn to our county attorney and see if there's a need to recess for a closed meeting.
Mr. Chair, we do not.
It's another good week in Scott County, isn't it?
It is.
It's a good week. Thank you. Let's see. Okay, that brings us to point number 10, which is the even more fun part of the meeting this morning. We have been awarded a Circle of Excellence Award by the Department of Human Services, and I think we have Commissioner Harpstead here this morning to make that. Good morning, welcome to the Scott County Board. Pam, do you want to set this up and tell us how we're doing here? This is a big deal, which is why many of you were in the audience this morning. Pam, welcome to the board.
Pleasure. Oh, so sorry. I hate this part. It is my pleasure to set this up this morning and to introduce Commissioner Harpstead and this agenda item. First of all, Commissioner Harpstead, thank you for recognizing the Scott County Family Resource Centers with a Commissioners Circle of Excellence Award. Suzanne Aronson and our Child Welfare Manager and her team have been leading this change effort. They have partnered with nonprofits and engaged the community in prevention work, as you can see by the full room here today. This work is really aimed at keeping children and families out of deep end services such as child protection. It is no small task to collaborate with multiple agencies, funding streams, and sometimes reluctant public officials to move this exciting work forward. This group, along with a multitude of partners, has effectively done this. With a vision of reducing trauma for children and improving the well-being of families, the Family Resource Centers will have a tremendous impact on our communities for years to come. So I want to thank you, Commissioner Harpstead, for being with us today. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner, welcome to the board. We're glad you're here and thank you for the award.
Thank you so much. Good morning, and thank you, Pam. I'm so pleased to be here, so pleased to see such a good turnout to celebrate excellence in human services as exhibited by the Scott County's Family Resources Centers. These centers exemplify what it means to work toward a brighter future for all Minnesotans. Without you, DHS could not achieve its mission to help Minnesotans meet their basic needs and achieve their highest potential. Thank you. Meeting community partners and learning more about the work you've done as a part of my job that I really love, I'm always impressed and moved by the knowledge, skills, and dedication of Minnesotans who work in human services. And I'm honored to have this opportunity to applaud your work by presenting a 2022 Circle of Excellence Award. opportunity to applaud your work by presenting a 2022 Circle of Excellence Award. We ask every year for nominations of organizations whose work supports the DHS mission to help people meet their basic needs so they can live in dignity and achieve their highest potential. Work that contributes to current DHS goals and priority projects, that demonstrates best practices in human services, achieves results that impact clients, and partners with others in the human services system. You've done outstanding work in identifying and meeting the needs of families across Scott County. I think it's wonderful that the groundwork for development of the Family Resource Centers began in 2018 under the vision and leadership of the Scott County Board of Commissioners. So thank you all. This model is outstanding because it engages Scott County residents who share their experiences and expertise to help drive service delivery. It's person-centered. And the programming that it does is something that we at DHS value highly and strive for every day. I understand that startup funding for the partnership was from the Sauer Family Foundation and has been critical to the Family Resource Centers initiative. I also understand that there are literally dozens of other partners, which is wonderful, because Scott County recognized that government alone cannot and should not attempt to meet all the needs of families in the community. I applaud the Family Resource Centers, parent groups, and all who have contributed to the success of this program with some 1,100 families have engaged with since they opened. I also applaud the centers and advisory councils for paying particular attention to Black, Indigenous, and families of color that have been historically marginalized. And I congratulate the centers for providing a universal access point for families seeking services ranging from parenting support to early literacy, financial literacy, mental and chemical health services, and more concrete support such as assistance with rent, utilities, and gas. DHS is honored to recognize the work of Scott County's Family Resource Centers with the 2022 Circle of Excellence Award. Congratulations. Unfortunately, we don't yet have your plaque in hand. This is a sample. We will send it as soon as we have it, and we'd love for you to take pictures with it and send them back to us. And now I invite Child Welfare Manager Suzanne Aronson to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner Harpstead. And thank you for being here today and for certainly honoring the work of our Family Resource Center partners. So we appreciate your time. I do want to start out by saying that this award really truly represents the very best in partnership and collaboration. We have Family Resource Center partners, many of which who are here with us today, that have come together for a common purpose. And that is how do we help support children and families to thrive in this community. Family Resource Centers really represent a transformational opportunity to change how we deliver services and to de-center government while re-centering community. We know that Family Resources, Resource Centers are best placed in community in a way that provides safe and welcoming space for families to access the supports they need. But I would say equally important is that Family Resource Centers provide the opportunity for parents, often who might feel isolated, disconnected, to be able to come in and build connection and build or rebuild community. So many of you all came to the table about a year and a half ago. And like, how do we form this thing we call Family Resource Centers? And so I'm excited to tell you a bit today about who do we have in the room, who have been our key partners. So we've got Jordan Area Food Shelf and Jordan Community Center who have donated space to provide increased service access within their community.
Suzanne, when you call their names, if they're here, could they at least just wave so we know who we're? I think I see some Jordanians back there, so.
Thanks, Tony. The Savage and Shakopee Library have also donated space. I know we've got Jake and some library staff here. We've got cultural navigators through our CAP Agency in Issaroon. And I will say, this is some of the most important service that we have being provided at the Family Resource Centers. They are providing a bridge to our Latinx and East African families and helping to bridge connections between community members and to reduce barriers around language access. So thanks for being here. We have parenting skills that are being provided by a number of different organizations. Our Scott County Mental Health Center, NAMI Minnesota, oh, no NAMI friends, and our Public Health Department. They are all, again, coming together to provide weekly parenting education and parenting support. We also have financial literacy provided by University of Minnesota Extension. We've got peer recovery. As everyone knows, addiction issues have ravaged families, have ravaged communities. So being able to have a partner to provide peer recovery out of Family Resource Centers has been instrumental. So our Minnesota Prevention and Recovery Alliance, representatives? No. We've got early literacy supports, again, through our Public Health Department, our library staff, both who, again, have been key partners, and our public, and our school districts have been our key partner. We have domestic violence supports through Southern Valley. Another key resource has been our Economic Assistance Navigation with our Economic Assistance Department. This is an increasing need for service. We see families needing an increased help navigating economic assistance. And what we do know through new and emerging research is that the more we can meet families' basic, concrete needs, it is a prevention strategy to help move families out of or keep them out of deep end service. We are also really excited to launch a new partnership with Damascus Way for father programming. There's Tier. And we also have housing navigation supports with Scott County Housing Staff. We've had opportunities to do wellness in the parks, Scott County Parks and the Family Resource Center. And I also want to do a special call out for our Parents Advisory Committee. We've got at least a couple of representatives. They are really the direction, they will help set the direction of our Family Resource Centers. They bring lived experience and live expertise to help drive our programming now and into the future. And I want to do a special call out to Scott County Prevention Unit, led by Nathan Holber, and then her staff, Crystal Blychko, Caitlin Judd, Tracy Herbert. They have really been the glue that binds all of the partners together to help move this forward and to change the way we provide services to families. So I am really just lucky to be a part of this work and to see how the community is really coming together to change service delivery. I will say I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge, as Commissioner Harpstead also already did, that this work would not really be possible if it were not for the support of the Sauer Family Foundation and Casey Family Programs. Sauer Family is currently funding the Family Resource Center project. But in addition to that, their Executive Director, Colleen O'Keeffe, has been an instrumental partner in helping just cast a vision for the work. We're also fortunate enough to have Mike Shaw from Casey Family Programs, who, again, with Casey Family and Mike in particular, is helping cast a vision for what prevention can look like in Scott County. Okay, lastly, then I'll be quiet. I do want to acknowledge that really, if not for the support of our Health and Human Services Director, Pam Selvig, our county administrator, Leslie Vermillion, and all of you, this work wouldn't have been possible. Your leadership around prevention and your leadership and challenge around how do we transform government is really what sets us forth here today. So thank you for all of your support. So I'll end here with just saying again, Commissioner Harpstead, thank you for being here. And on behalf of all of the Family Resource Center partners, thank you for the award.
You must be Barb White and Brecky.
I am.
You're us. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for coming to Scott County. We enjoy having you here and are glad that you're here. It's wonderful to have a joyous moment, to celebrate and have some joy. As you might have heard, we had a little bit of anti-joy this weekend with phone calls and traffic and things like this. So this is just so very welcome. I will say that probably about two and a half, three years ago, I was in the Shakopee Library Community Room with a group from Together We Can, looking at research articles on Family Resource Centers. So that is amazing. The glue you talked about, but Suzanne, also your leadership, the support from Sauer Family Foundation, Casey, all the work you do made it happen. When I sat there that day, I maybe was a little skeptical that this could happen. So success. Thank you for showing us that it can. Thank you. I feel like you've done this, even though you've had to deal with us. Like, we know we are sometimes a challenge and a stumbling block, but thank you for listening because truly, Commissioner Harpstead, you said it right. One of the tenants of this board is that government cannot and should not do it all. And this is an example of it happening in a way to bring in the whole community, to make life better for families, to hopefully keep families from meeting our deep end services. So it is a celebration. The work you've all done has really focused on those tenants of limited government, of fiscal responsibility, and accountability and education for folks. So I can only thank you. Thank you for showing us that this can happen. I'm excited, so very excited to see how this will continue to grow and evolve in the next years. A thank you to the participants and the Parent Resource Council members who are here, because you're going to be integral in making this happen, making this become a community program supported by all, and probably taking us out of it. We don't even need to be involved in the long term. So that is really great. So Commissioner, thank you for being here. Thank you for recognizing us. I know one of my colleagues said, are you going to go say a few things people don't really want to hear? So I'll just end that now. And then I know we're going to take some photos. We do want to really memorialize this, this touch point in the history of Family Resource Centers. Document your involvement, celebrate how you're all here. So we are going to do a few pictures before we conclude the meeting, Mr. Chair.
We are.
Thank you. So round of applause. Thank you for changing and saving lives in Scott County.
Make that light green. There you go. Good to go.
May just for a moment. I so enjoyed listening to your list of partners talk about wraparound services. I can't think of a thing you haven't included in your Family Resource Centers. So thank you very much for that. I also wanted to mention that Pam and Suzanne are part of our DHS and county work teams and councils. And so we're grateful for that. We was in a meeting with Scott County last week with Max, talking about potential proposals for the next session. And so we're grateful for our relationship with Scott County as we work to build a seamless state, county, tribal, human service system across the state of Minnesota. So thank you for that as well, and just so glad to be here today. Thank you.
Commissioner, if I may, can you stand by for about seven minutes? We're going to adjourn, and then we're going to have a series of pictures taken in front of the DAs, if we may.
You adjourn first?
Everything has been said, but do you need to say more? Or we're good? Okay. This is great. Members, I'll entertain the most famous motion of all. Oh, boy. Let's toss up Beer and Wolf. Discussion of that motion, there isn't any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.